All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Yuba City City Council and a special meeting of the successor agency of the redevelopment agency and the city council. The regular meeting of the city council is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to tonight's meeting. Once we conclude the regular meeting, we will move into closed session under the special meeting tonight. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
Councilmember Pescualli.
Here.
All right, if you will stand, tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Dan Callahan from Legacy Baptist Church. And Councilmember Kirchner, will you lead us in the pledge following?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble hearts, knowing that without you our efforts are empty. We ask for your presence to fill this place and by guiding every conversation, every decision, and every heart in this room. May this not just be another meeting, but a moment where your wisdom leads the way. Lord, we lift up every person here who serves our city in any capacity, and we also pray for their families, protect their homes, strengthen their relationships, and remind them that their service matters, not just to the people around them, but to you. And Father, we lift up our first responders, the men and women who step into unknown every single day to protect us, to shield us, may you bring them peace and be present in the times of trouble. Lord, we ask that you provide the resources and leadership and unity we need to make this a safer, stronger, more compassionate place for generations to come. And above all, we thank you for your gift of salvation. We love you in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, is there any agenda modifications by the council this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move to our first item tonight under ceremonial presentations, and that is the 2024 Officer of the Year, Detective Joe Swallow. And I'd like to ask Detective Swallow to come forward. And also at this time, I'd like to go ahead and invite Tasha Weaver from Senator Megan Dally's office and Carrie Haynes from Congressman Lamapha's office to join us as well so that we can make our presentations. Before I read this, it's quite an honor for you to be selected as the 2024 Officer of the Year. But from what I've gotten to read and the little bit that I've gotten to know you, and I know that's not great English saying "gotten," but that's the way we talk in the South, it's well deserved. And I just want to say, before we even read this, on behalf of everybody that calls Yuba City home and drives through here every day, thank you for what you do, and thank you for what you've done and the lives you've impacted. With that, we're going to recognize Detective Joe Swallow as a 2024 Yuba City Police Department Officer of the Year. And whereas Joe Swallow was hired by the police, as a police officer by the city of Yuba City on August 26, 2013, after a very competitive and comprehensive testing process. In 2020, Joe was assigned to the investigation unit, where he has demonstrated his profound dedication to justice and helping the vulnerable members of our society by identifying and rescuing victims of crime. Detective Swallow serves as a mentor and teacher to officers and investigators by passing on the knowledge and skills he has acquired to help in the training of new officers. Joe has a deep passion for human trafficking investigations and, in the past year alone, played a vital role in two high-profile cases that led to multiple arrests. He has also led Operation Targeting Illicit Massage Pollers, helping improve the quality of life in our community. Detective Swallow's dedication and tireless efforts bring great credit to the Yuba City Police Department and to the law enforcement profession. And whereas you were recognized in 2024 as the Yuba City Police Department's Officer of the Year for your selfless dedication and his peers, to his peers and the citizens of Yuba City. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Dave Shaw, as the mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and the citizens we serve, do hereby congratulate Detective Joe Swallow on his selection as the 2024 Yuba City Police Department's Officer of the Year. Do I have to say a few words?
I'm good, thanks.
Thank you for coming, everybody. All right.
My name is Tasha Weaver. I'm with Senator Megan Dally's office. Per usual, I've been invited to come to these kind of events to celebrate wonderful people in our community. So Detective Joe Swallow, we would like to thank you and congratulate you on being Officer of the Year for 2024. We, just reading up on how you have mentored your peers and mentored your fellow police officers, investigators, as well as also helping the victims and identifying those victims and helping them to receive services that I'm sure that they would have maybe not received if you had not been involved. So we are very, very thankful. I'm here actually on behalf of both the senator as well as the assembly member, James Gallagher. And so on behalf of the senator and the assembly member, we would like to provide you a resolution that is honoring you as the Officer of the Year. And congratulations. This is for you. I know it's hefty, I know.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Haynes. I'm with Congressman Lamapha's office here in Yuba City out of his district office. We want to congratulate you profoundly because of the work you have done within the community and for the North State citizens of the Yuba City, excuse me, the Yuba Sutter community. We can't praise you enough on what you've done, and we do have a certificate for you as well.
Thank you. Mark just reminded me. If you would like, we'd like to invite down all your fellow officers down and take a picture with you, and we'll slide to the back before I do that. All right, we're going to move on to Agenda Item 2, which is Public Communication. Appearance of Interested Citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours before tonight's meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public tonight? Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we're going to move on through the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Do we have any public comments on the consent agenda items tonight? Any public comment on the consent calendar? All right, then we'll bring it back to council for comments or action.
To the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items 3 through 7.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. We're going to move to our business items, Agenda Item 8. Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation 2025 to 2030 Five-Year Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, which we affectionately call SEDS, update, Public Works Project Update, and the 2024 SEDS Annual Performance Evaluation. Ms. Stranix, thanks for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. Brenda Stranix, President Chief Operating Officer of the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation, also the District Director for the Economic Development District, which is Yuba Sutter Counties. We are here tonight to do a few things. Normally, we're just giving you a one-year update. This year, we'll be giving you that one-year update, as well as asking for a resolution and adoption for the 25, well, 2630 SEDS, which is the next annual five-year, and then we'll be back on an annual basis for updates. I would like to thank your city manager, Diana Langley, for her activity, her participation, and her guidance in the, specifically in the public works projects for the city of Yuba City. It's important for those to be included as thoroughly as possible, so that we can then seek funding from various federal and state agencies when appropriate. So with that, I'm going to introduce my colleague, Cynthia Roderick. Cynthia is the mastermind behind the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy work. It's a big project, especially when we're closing out one five-year cycle and developing a second cycle. So I'm going to turn it over to her. She's going to give you a quick update on some regional data, and then there are some, a few specific Yuba City projects that she'll be presenting.
Thank you, Brenda. And thank you, City Council. So together we have a vision, and together we will build a thriving community through innovation, investment in our infrastructure, and a strong commitment to economic growth, creating and unparalleled opportunities and an exceptional quality of life in the Yuba Sutter region. So the next few slides are going to be an overall view of the last five years and currently five years for the Yuba Sutter region. There I go again. Okay, so employment and workforce in the Yuba City MSA, that includes Yuba Sutter Counties, the cities of Livock, Marysville, Wheatland, and the city of Yuba City. We have had an employment growth. We grew by 1.7% over the year, and mostly it's been an upward trend in terms of employment and workforce in our region. Economic in the area, we've had a slight increase in the poverty levels. However, our well-being, with the exception of poverty levels, has been on the increase. Our median household income has grown, and the average wages have grown. So we're keeping up. Our domestic product had a substantial movement, a 7.22% increase. We're still struggling with education attainment. I'm not sure how we can achieve growth in this, but we are struggling, and we really need to do something about this. It's a significant challenge in our region and should be addressed immediately. We added, over the last 10 years up to 2023, 9,872 jobs, ending in 2023. The top industries still remain as healthcare and social assistance, retail, educational services, accommodation and food services, agriculture remains at the top, and public In the last year, we've had a growth of 614 establishments in the region, from last year, which was 5,812 establishments, to 6,429. So we are growing. Agriculture, which has a big impact in our area, increased by 4% in Sutter County and a whopping 35.7% in Yuba County. And just a reflection on how Beal Air Force Base affects us all, they executed 67.7 million in local contracts in fiscal year 2022, and it totaled 10,900 jobs in our area. In Yuba City, there were 24 new businesses that opened, which created a total of 336 jobs in our area. So good job. Just an overview of what Yuba Sutter Economic Development has done for the area. We've had $1.7 billion in public investment and $76 million in private investment. We've expended a lot of hours to this, scholarships, and would like you to note that there were the 677 jobs created and retained. I missed a slide here. Regionally, through transit, the Yuba Sutter Transit replaced six zero-emission buses and has a $55.8 million project. They're only short by about $3 million, so that project is definitely going through. And Yuba City had two public work projects that were completed in 2024 at a $9.05 million investment, and they have nine projects slated for construction in 2025. And I wanted to mention that there were some that were just completed in 2024, but we will report on them next year. There were several housing projects in Yuba City. Four of them, and they were targeted or slated for low-income families and seniors, and in addition to several market rate projects for development or undergoing construction in Yuba City. So there's Tranquil Harbor Estates, Merrymint Village, Life Advancement Center, and Richland Village. Culturally, overall quality of life, the Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture has seven ongoing projects in the area that impacts the arts and culture in our area. Sutter County Museum had over 9,000 visitors. The Seek parade had over 100,000, which was a huge impact to the city. The Swan Festival had hundreds. And other regional projects include the Bakaai Festival, the High Wheelers at Venice Health, Alice Lake Park. And in Yuba City, the Plumas Lake, Plumas Street Historic District and Water Tower improvements was a $2.236 million investment. Sutter Bike Path Extension, $2.48 million investment. And the Summer Stroll draws thousands of people to downtown Yuba City. In terms of regional safety, we do have the Yuba Sutter Homeless Consortium, and they saw a lot of high usage in their services that they provided. About 95% homeless people did utilize the shelters. And other safety measures by Yuba City was the Citywide Signal hardware upgrades and the construction is to begin in 2025. There's roadway safety signing, audit, and upgrades, and pedestrian safety crosswalk and crosswalk upgrades, which going to improve about 15 unsignalized intersections, primarily in these schools. So that's a real brief presentation. The SEDS is available on Yuba Sutter Economic Development's website. Choose yubasutter.com, and you can read the full report. And you can also read the full report of Yuba City Public Works Projects also on our website. And if you have any questions, please, we'll be free to answer them.
All right, thank you for being here tonight. Does the council have any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
Thanks for the report. It's always good to see the data. Can you go back to the education slide?
Something that's of great concern to me. I got out of it. I'm sorry.
That's it. So on a later slide, it seemed like you were capturing workforce data, but it seems to me that education attainment, when we talk about high school graduates, some college associate degree, bachelor, are we tracking at all, you know, graduates out of Yuba College's welding program or any of the workforce stuff that's going on? Because it seems to me that there seems to be a pretty good shift. Obviously, all of us have a fair amount of working knowledge of what's going on in Yuba and their shift towards workforce development. Is there a way to capture that at all?
So there is. We can bring back and provide to you, you know, data with certificated programs and the like. I would remind the council that the region has received a $500,000 grant through SECOG to do a very in-depth workforce study and analysis of current programs with the goal to determine where our shortfalls are, to meet not only current demand of our employers, but also future demand. And so we'll be working on that through the next 12, 15, 18 months, and we'll be bringing that presentation back to you when it is complete. And of course, you'll all be, I'm sure, intimately involved in gathering data as well.
Perfect.
But we can certainly get that, the certificate program data to you.
Thanks, Brenda. I just think that that is a shift I know that they're trying to address, and it makes sense, given, you know, the state of the economy right now.
Right.
It's not always a bachelor's degree, right?
No. What was most alarming to me, and we've struggled with this for years, this no high school diploma or no high school graduate, or the declining high school graduates is extremely concerning to me. And maybe as we work through this workforce assessment and deliverables, we'll be able to determine what's causing that. What is the root cause of these young people not completing at least high school, right? So hopefully, we can figure out what's going on there, what's causing that, and then make adjustments accordingly. And maybe it is more of the CTE programs, right? And getting kids focused on what, where their strengths are rather than, so they're not losing interest in obtaining a diploma, at least high school.
Just this morning, I filled out Yuba College's survey on where their perceptions. And that's why I asked the question, is there a way to capture?
There is, and we'll bring that back to you.
Excellent, thank you.
The college did report that they did have a 7% increase in enrollment in their spring, fall, summer.
Spring. And they're actually hitting their pre-pandemic numbers with regard to enrollment, so that's encouraging.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Yeah, having been on that board, the caveat with enrollment is who's completing? That's the number that needs to be on the radar. There's a lot to start, but if you look at it, when the numbers articulate down to, it's an average, I think, of six years for most people to get through Yuba College right now. So that's probably a number that would be probably more important to even see than just the numbers of enrollment.
Other than enrollment, certainly.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
I want, one question I have for you, I believe it was one slide back, the employment data. Nope, keep going. There we go. Just saw the recent report, you can actually see it a little bit there. It's like labor force has been really flat, and it talks about our employment of growth, growing, but the recent report that I saw on our region shows in that third line, unemployment is going up. So how do those numbers all really relate there, and what are we doing about it, Bren? Because it's concerning that unemployment is going up in the Yuba Sutter region, and it looks like we're gaining numbers. So is people relocating? Is it people coming from outside of the area? What's driving up our unemployment? Do we know?
You know, I don't know that I have the answer to that. You know, we're a farming agriculture community, so wouldn't, depending on when you're looking at the unemployment, but this is, these are annual totals, and we did have an increase, a fairly significant increase in unemployment this last year. You know, the economy has been strange. The political climate has been strange. I don't know if that's what's driving that. It very well could be.
Okay, I just didn't know if you guys had any insight, you know, from your perspective, what was causing it, because I just recently saw those numbers, so thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council?
I got a question. Are these numbers, the labor force, are these taking into account people that commute out of our community to go work in Sacramento?
Yes.
It does.
If they're residing there and are employed.
They're employed, they're employed, but where it's employed.
Then they're considered our labor force.
Could we see what the transition is from how many people? Because years ago, I used to commute to Sacramento at 5:00 in the morning, and there wasn't anybody on the road. Now you get there at 4:00, and it's a stream of traffic. And that's concerning to me, that we become totally a commuter community.
It's significant.
Okay.
Commute patterns are very significant, and I can share that data with you.
Perfect.
And actually, it's interesting to me when I look at that data and analyze it. Yes, we see a great number of people going out of the community, whether Yolo or Sacramento County, Placer County, et cetera. And the commute pattern between Yuba County and Sutter County is almost identical. So that hasn't changed much over the last 20 years or so, but we are seeing an increase of people working outside Yuba Sutter County and commuting from Yuba City, Marysville.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
To the mayor, excuse me if this is a rookie question. So sitting on SECOG now, we are about to consider and approve local transportation funds coming back to Yuba City and Sutter County, and this year, it's a million bucks less. Do you guys track the total sales tax? And I mean, I'm trying, I'm searching for a reason why we would be going down that much money.
A million dollars less than last year?
Yep. And that's, we get a quarter cent of the sales tax, and it comes back to the county, and then it gets distributed, their formulas, to the cities to Livock us, and then the county keeps them. But our share, the county's overall share was down. But our share, the county's overall share was down 1.1 million bucks. I'm going, whoa, what happened here? We went from like 7 million to 6 million, basically.
Was there any explanation from CACOG?
There's not. And I will ask them on Thursday. I just didn't know if you had a flavor for what?
I don't, but I'll go back and use some of my magic tools and see if I can find an answer for you.
Because it just, you know, I know that the economy isn't as robust as it was, but that seemed like a pretty big number.
That's significant.
Especially when it's roads.
Yeah. And especially when we're seeing increase in establishments. We're seeing increase in labor force. We're seeing some of those things that don't really tie back to that. And we're all paying more in tax on everything we're buying today, you know?
Especially gas tax.
Especially the gas tax.
Anyway, yeah, if you can, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll see what I can find.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments here from the council? Then we will open this up to public comment. Is there any comments from the public concerning the SEDS presentation? Any comments from the public concerning SEDS presentation? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council because this is an action item for action or further discussion. We need to...
Through the mayor.
You're approving the update to the prior year. You're approving your public works list, and you're approving the five-year document.
Through the mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt a resolution approving the five-year 2025 to 2030 CEDS, the 2024 Comprehensive Economic Development Evaluation and Performance Report, and the updated appendices, one, public works projects, and authorize it's middle to the United States Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you for the overall presentation tonight, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you for having us, and I'll get back to you with the data that you asked for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to Agenda Item 9, which is a letter of commitment with Yuba County Sheriff's Department, potential future agreement to utilize RIMS integrated public safety software. interim Chief Runyon, he's already there.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just a quick overview. This is just an approval to sign a commitment letter with Yuba County Sheriff's Department for a grant for the purchase of a new CAD system called RIMS. So this supports the strategic goal of the city, public safety, strengthens law enforcement relationships in the area, improve emergency response, and working towards a consolidated dispatch down the road. So Yuba County Sheriff's Department is currently seeking a grant in the amount of roughly $2.6 million. And that would, if they were to get it, it would fund the initial startup cost of a CAD system for Yuba CDPD, Marysville PD, and Sutter County Sheriff's Department. Yuba County already has the CAD system. So currently, right now, all four agencies are using a different records management system, which is a huge issue for a consolidated dispatch at this time. So the benefits of this obviously improves investigation collaboration with the other agencies because it works, it's the same system. They can communicate with one another. Security and emergency response for law and fire. And again, like I mentioned, working towards a consolidated dispatch in mind. So the fiscal impact, there is no initial fiscal impact to this. It's a very pricey system. If we were to get this grant, it would cover the initial implementation of this system, which is roughly $900,000 for our portion. Moving forward, we have annual maintenance fees on our CAD system as it is. This one actually comes in lower, believe it or not. So that would be a benefit down the road for us as well. So the recommendation is for the city of Yuba City to sign a commitment letter to the Yuba County Sheriff's Department for a potential future agreement to utilize the RIMS integrated public safety software, which would be fully funded by a prospective California Department of Justice National Criminal History Improvement Program grant, and adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the commitment letter with Yuba County Sheriff's Department for participation in the RIMS integrated public safety software. So alternatives are to reject the proposal or find alternative funding sources to purchase a CAD system. There's no, again, this is a commitment letter, but it's not binding if that's the case. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Looks like Mike Scott. As one of the folks like way back when for Spillman, I think this is so long overdue. This pleases me to know and to see that we're finally taking a look at a records management system, and the bonus being that it would be region-wide. So I'm totally and fully supportive of this. The only question I have is, would there be any hardware changes that would accompany this down the line? I mean, are the dispatcher stations the same? Are the fire engine, in the police car, computers the same?
Yes. I'm kind of staring at IT over there.
I see that.
When it gets into the weeds of that stuff, I'm referring to them. But it's a major project, obviously, once you implement it. But the biggest benefit really is if everyone's on the system, it actually, you can see each other's information. You can cordon off information that you don't want other agencies to see. But right now, we can't see anything other counties are doing, or at least our counties in this area. And coming with maintenance fees lower than we currently have is unheard of.
Thanks.
Any other comments from the council? Any other questions? All right. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, I will bring it back to the council for action on this.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to take action on Item 9, letter of commitment with the Yuba County Sheriff's Department, potential future agreement to utilize RIMS integrated public safety software. Recommendation A and B as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, which is community sponsorships. Ms. Morales, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Kristi Morales, and I'm here today to go over the community sponsorships. A little bit of background on Plazium. Their mission is to provide our local community with programs, services, and hands-on play exhibits where all children, families, and community members of diverse backgrounds and abilities can explore, discover, create, and learn together. The annual Touch a Truck event provides the opportunity for more than 3,000 residents to get up and close with a variety of vehicles. The request is to have a monetary sponsorship up to $2,000 and in-kind services with participation of city staff and vehicles for the event. The temple annually organizes a community cultural parade, and this year it lands on April 6. The parade celebrates the birth of Sri Guri Rabadas, the Sikh cultural, while also serving as a vibrant demonstration of our community's inclusivity and diversity. The request from the temple is a monetary sponsorship of 2,500. A monetary sponsorship of up to 4,500 would utilize the city's dedicated sponsorship accounts. Quarterly, the community events would be 2,500 quarterly. And both of these event sponsorships would be in quarter three. We do have remaining funds from quarter two of 1,500 and as well as 1,000 from quarter three as well. The impact would be the 2,000 monetary sponsorship out of the community events account and the estimated cost associated with staff time for the event, which is $1,325.68. The temple monetary sponsorship in the amount of 2,500 would be from the same account for community events. Alternatives would be, one, do not authorize the monetary sponsorship request. Two, approve the monetary sponsorship requests with changes. Or three, provide staff with an alternate direction. The recommendation tonight is to consider the sponsorship request from Plazium and the temple, and if approved, adopt A and B. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
Any questions from the council?
So yes, on Plazium, it says up to 2,000. So we've sort of made a practice here of giving for what they need. Up to 2,000 seems like it could be $5, or it could be $2,000.
They do have different tiers for the request. It's just like part of their package, ranging from 2,000 and then ranging all the way down to 100. So it goes 2,000, 1,000, 500, 250, and 100. Just depends on the package.
Okay. And then, so we do have a range there. And so the in-kind is already 1,300 and whatever it was. So if we did 2,000 and the 1,000, we'd be at 3,325.68, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Not a question, just a comment. I'd like to thank the staff for putting time in this and for the council to be considering it at this time. Both are worthwhile events. For the public who may be not familiar with the Sikh event at the temple, it's located over on Hayne Avenue. So if you walk out the front door of the Moose, that's Hayne Avenue. And this should be their fourth or fifth annual event. And it's a religious event. It's an opportunity, which was already stated, to celebrate our city's diversity. And you really see it on, it's really showcased well there. And for those folks that are maybe a little bit wary about going to the one in November because there's just so many people there, this is a really neat event. It's a much scaled-down version of this. But if you're not doing anything on April 6, I highly recommend you go. That's all I have.
Councilor Vesqually, do you have anything? Okay. Anything, Ms. Cole?
Okay. So again, not a question, just a couple comments. I've been to the Plazium fundraiser. It's great. I've not been to the other one. I did read that there would be only $500 left over for the fourth quarter, correct? If we were to give all of these? Okay. I think just in fairness, I'd like to maybe tweak the number so that we have that full 2,500 for the fourth quarter. I don't know if that's a decision we make up here right now, but I'd love to give both of them everything. But I also feel like that, just in keeping with the responsibility of what we should be doing per quarter, trying to put 2,500 in the fourth quarter would be a good idea.
All right. Thank you. You were right down the avenue of what I was thinking because the spirit of when we originally set this aside was having money every quarter. And then to the vice mayor's point, we're already giving Plazium 1,300 in-kind because we have to pay our staff and our team and everything to go out and take the trucks there and everything. Both are wonderful, but we do need to carry over, I think, what the spirit of this council set for, 2,500 into the fourth quarters. So I think we start with, we've got 2,500 for this quarter. Is that, that's everything we've got left, correct? It's 5,000 for the year?
Yes.
Okay. So I would second what she heard, just agree with her that I think we need to limit this quarter to 2,500 and then figure out how we're going to divvy that up. That way, we have the opportunity for others to come forward in the next quarter. So do we need to take a motion on that, Mr. Chaffin? Or just thumbs up on that? Can we get a microphone? You got to turn it on there, I think.
You know, there was a, can you hear me?
Yes, I think, yeah.
You know, there was a part of me hoping that I wouldn't have to use this today, but... The CR beat me to this, so she was smart to know. Yeah, the city council has authority to set whatever amount that they want per the quarter. You can do that this evening after public comment, would be my suggestion. So if you want to cap it at 2,500, then the council would then make the motion to give X amount to person A and X amount to person B, and presumably, those numbers would add up to 2,500.
Okay. That helps me.
You could also do it without prejudice for them to come back at a later quarter if necessary, if there were still funds for a follow-up. But that's up to the council.
The only prejudice would be against our city attorney, so he can't come back and ask for more.
I'm used to it. I'm used to it.
All right. Is there any other questions from the council right now? Or we want to go ahead and open it up to public comment? Okay. Right now, we'll open it to public comments. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the community sponsorship?
Actually, we need you to go to the podium, please. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, Stacy Howe with Plazium. I'm the executive director. And I just want to thank you, just to add a little bit. This is our eighth year for doing Touch a Truck. And every year, we've been really successful at bringing together vehicles from private businesses as well as government agencies. And excited to have you guys there again this year and appreciate all your support.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Any further comments from the public? Okay. Hearing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council for further discussion and then some actions as we decide. What is the will of the council at all? Are we...
We need to do the math.
Yep. We need to do the math. So I'll make the first motion. I move that we limit this quarter's contributions to 2,500 to leave the remaining 2,500 to the next quarter. Okay, so I have a motion by myself, and I have a second by Councilor Vesqually. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. We're going to limit it to 2,500 for the cash donations. Now, how do you want to break it up?
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes. I'll make a motion to split the 2,500 two ways between the two applicants.
It'd be 12-50 apiece.
Maybe the other 1,000.
Yeah. That's the other part. So do you factor in the in-kind into that?
I would, to be fair. I mean, that's being utilized by Plazium. So that would mean that there'd be a remainder of like 1,100 or so, thereabouts, right? To the Sikh.
Okay. So let me try to follow the bouncing ball because the dollar value with the associated staff times, not in the 2,000 equation, but you want to charge out of the 2,000 for that and then give the remainder over to the temple? Is that where you're going? Or split that? I'm trying to track.
Let me think this through.
Yeah, now I'm a little confused too. The in-kind doesn't, is not at all included in the 2,500. Okay, then my thought yesterday in reading through this was then 1,000 for Plazium, 1,500 for the Sikh. That's the math I did yesterday. Honestly, no reason or rhyme, but it seemed fair.
Okay. I'm going to throw out the other wrench for you to think about. The 132568 comes out of our budget period. Because that comes out of the general fund because we have people there. Do we want to use the community sponsorship money to replace the 132568 out of the general fund as the contribution? Or do we just want to eat it? That's kind of the bigger question. Once we decide that, then we'll know what we've got left.
I think you start nibbling on precedent if we start taking out a general fund. I'll be honest. Again, having, you know, the establishment of this was to 2,500. If 2,500 of staff is saying it's going to cost us 1,325, as much as I would love to give both of them 5,000, it's, this is a kind of a budget, budget.
And we've got a deficit. Yeah. Okay. So if I follow that train of thought, then what we're doing is we're taking 2,500, looking at Plazium, getting 132568 in-kind, but we're going to use the community fund to backfill the general fund. And that leaves us a remainder for a cash contribution to one or both.
So that'd be like 1,100.
I think that. Real close. Am I tracking what your intent was? Okay. So, what does the?
So, through the mayor, my understanding of the motion would be to adopt a resolution approving a sponsorship request from the Plazium in the amount of 1,325.68 for staff time and costs associated with the event and also adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request from the temple in the amount of 1,174.32, which collectively is 2,500 dollars. Is that correct?
I think you earned your keep tonight. You're there. So, is that, was that the intent you had, sir? Okay, any questions?
Hmm.
No.
Hearing none? Okay, then.
Yeah, I was, it's okay with me. I was actually thinking that the city would eat just that 100 and something dollars to truly make it equal. Does that make sense with, so that it would be the 2,500 cut in half? The CEAC would get 1,250, Plazium would get 1,250, and then the city would eat the that, yeah, that 100 and something dollars.
I'll help you with that, sir.
Yeah.
The old-fashioned way, we'll get out here, flip a coin. Okay. Now then, that we've thrown you a wrench, do you understand the motion? Because I do.
The motion would be to adopt a resolution approving a sponsorship request from Plazium in the amount of 1,250 dollars and also to adopt a resolution to approve a monetary sponsorship request to the temple in the amount of 1,250 dollars with the council members on the side probably reaching out and assisting with the shortfall in the rest.
That would be it. Mr. Kircher, does that kind of fit the motion you really wanted?
Yes, it does.
All right, so we've got a motion. Do I have a second for?
Second.
And I have a second. Why are these things this difficult? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Ayes have it. Thank you. You got your trucks and it's a great event. And I'm just glad that we can continue on in our current budget situation, so thank you. All right, let's move on to agenda item 11, which is the Adventist Health Ad-Hoc Committee. Ms. Langley?
Yes, I was going to ask Vice Mayor Boomgarden if he would take the lead on this because he was the one that requested that council consider this.
Sure, thanks. I was going to give that to almost interim city manager, Robert Bendorf, but I won't do that. Sorry. At a meeting, I can't remember if it was one or two meetings ago, I expressed concerns that had been risen, had have arisen in regards to Adventist Health. You know, there's been some social media activity. First and foremost, I want to convey that it's never my intent to do any Adventist bashing. That wasn't the intent, though I think that's how it was portrayed in certain circles. What I am interested in is having our council have the opportunity and I guess it's the opportunity to actually sit down with Adventist leadership at whatever level they have to begin to discuss things that are going on within our community that rise to the level of the city council's knowledge. We are not a regulatory agency in any way, shape, or form for the hospital or its medical services that they provide. However, as a body that represents 71, 72,000 people, I think we have a stake. And heretofore, you know, it seems like we have sometimes incurred difficulty having the opportunity to sit down with leadership at the hospital. Predominantly, things that are on my mind right now are Project Hope, which, you know, we have vested interest in learning more about. It's been told to me, at least informally, that that project is dead. I would like to hear that formally. And I figure that an ad hoc committee of two of us would probably be a good venue to figure out what the heck is going on with that program so that we're not running on rumor or innuendo. There are other things that are going on that may be factual, maybe not be factual with Adventist Health. And I think the proper way to approach that is to have dialogue and communication formally. And that's my intent is to, or was my intent and continues to be my intent moving forward is let's have a pow-wow so that we can, we may even be able to help dispel stuff that sometimes gets legs and starts running within the community. But, you know, medical provision, whether it's in the hospital setting or the urgent cares or, you know, the private practice doctors, et cetera, is a big deal. And with just one hospital in the area and one provider of that services within that hospital, it just seems reasonable to me that we would have the ability to have a communication and conversation on a more regular basis. And I would be hopeful that Adventist feels the same.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, well said on many fronts there. Starting back at the beginning with what you talked about, and I think that part of our community just needs to take a deep breath and stop being keyboard warriors out there because people get out there on social media and start making mountains out of mo-hills. And, you know, you brought it forward. We need to sit down and find out what's going on with healthcare in our region. We don't oversee them, but we are partners in this community. And we want to continue to be good partners. So, it was a way to just get us all to the table and see really what's going on. Project Hope, you know, we've heard informally, but like you said, we haven't heard formally. We've heard a lot of rumors. We need to get down to the bottom line as far as what's really going on in our community versus what's, you know, social media, keyboard warriors out there doing things. And so, that's what we've been trying to do this year is make sure the lines of communication are very transparent and open. And talking with Chris Champlin, matter of fact, earlier today, I know that that is their intent as well and to sit down and just have a very open and honest conversation. I shared with Mr. Champlin what my intent was with this coming forward and the two people that I was planning on putting forward. And he looks forward to meeting with the ad hoc committee and starting that dialogue. And he said if there was any specific questions that we could, you know, go ahead and let him know what those are and he'd be prepared to answer those questions. And then, he will be coming before the council in these chambers, I believe, in May. So, the full council will get an update with what's going on with Adventist and Ride Out Health. So, with that, is there any questions before I make my recommendation from the council? Any questions you guys have or comments? Okay, any comments from the public? To the, you'll have to go to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And I'll remind you, this is public comment. It's not a Q and A time, so just keep that in mind. Okay. Okay.
Mayor, I think this is a great idea. My suggestion might be for you to meet with all of the other local medical providers as well. And there's also a Yuba City Healthcare Council that you might want to put a member attending those meetings.
All righty, thank you. Any other comments? Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. With the dialogue that's been going on and the conversations that I had, my recommendation for this ad hoc would be myself as the mayor and the vice mayor, as he brought this forward, I think that we could get in the room and work through this and really see what's going on and have a good dialogue and bring some good information back to the council. So, that would be what I would move forward with a motion to appoint myself and the vice mayor as the ad hoc committee to meet with Adventist.
We need to take action on your appointment?
We need to ratify it, I believe, yes, sir, because it was brought.
So, moved.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. All right, then the motion carries. We move that forward. We will continue to reach out and set those meetings up in the next few weeks. And I'll be working with yourself, Mark, if there's any specifics, we'll get those over to Chris. All righty, moving on to agenda item 12, future agenda items. Is there anything from the council that they want brought forward in the next few weeks?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I was contacted by one of my constituents about A Street and the use of it as a thoroughfare for people picking and delivering and picking up their children from Bridge Street School. It's possibly having it monitored a little better than it is. There are no sidewalks from Hawthorne all the way to the school. And there was some grave concern there from one of my constituents. So, we could see about.
It'd be possible to get an update on this thoroughfare at a future council meeting? All right. Hey, you got to answer tonight, so welcome. All right, anything else from the council? Okay, then we're going to go ahead and move right along to reports and communications. And the first one we're going to start with is the city manager's report. Ms. Langley?
Thank you. So, just to follow up on Merrimitt Village, Vice Mayor Boomgarden and Councilmember Pasquale and Doug Libby and I were able to meet with HCD on Monday. And I'm hoping one of the council members can report on the outcome of that meeting. We also have a follow-up Habitat Ad-Hoc Committee meeting tomorrow afternoon. And this will be my final day to acknowledge that there is Waffle Wednesday next Wednesday. So, thank you to the senior commission. And I also want to thank council. They know me well that I don't like public recognition. They acknowledged me prior to the council meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you. We're under city manager, so Mr. Bendorf, is there anything you would like to add tonight as you're going to be coming on as the interim? And we are your monkeys and this is your circus, as I call it.
Well, similar to Diana, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar to Diana, I'm the same way. I'm not really much on the recognition. It's your council that does the business. We're here to support you. And I am excited at the opportunity to be able to serve the council and staff here and the residents. And people always ask, who do you work for? And I tell them, sir, first it's the city council. They determine whether I come and go. But I really work for the staff here and also for the residents and businesses. So, I'm excited to be able to do that here in my hometown where I grew up. And I know there's big shoes to fill with Diana. I've had the luxury of working with her for many years. And I'm going to miss her presence here. But thank you for the opportunity.
And thank you. We're looking forward to the journey ahead, so thank you. We'll move on to council reports. I want to mix it up tonight. So, Councilmember Kirchner, how about you, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Since we last met, I attended a regional water authority meeting down in Sacramento. The only actual item was to ratify 2025 Executive Committee. There was, we had a vacancy and they held an election, ratified the position. Mosquito Vector was the appointment of a district etymatologist. They study bugs and they got that person on. And, but the one thing that they shelved for the next meeting was the, they appointed an ad hoc to take a look at the defined contribution plan versus the defined benefit plan. And so, we were supposed to receive a report from that ad hoc and they decided to shelve that till the next meeting. Lastly, I was fortunate enough to be invited to a mock jury trial right next door between Sutter High School, the students of Sutter High School, and the students of Marysville High School. And it was presided by Jesse Santana, made the front page. David Flores, brother of Dan, supervisor Dan Flores, was the one who initiated this. And the level of maturity and the professionalism that these students, it was just, it was amazing. And the plan is to continue to do this and hopefully involve some of the other schools such as Yuba City and River Valley. It was really exciting just to be a part of that. I got to say something really quickly about our soon-to-be former city manager. The last couple of months, I was speaking to a former city employee. And I won't mention his name. But what he told me was, in his time with the city of Yuba City, he'd seen many, he'd worked for many city managers and he'd also worked for many school principals and that Diana was the best boss he'd ever had. And with that, I'll conclude my report.
All righty. Councilmember McColl?
So, no commissions or committees to report on, but I did graciously get a tour of the water treatment plant bright and early. So, thanks, Ben, a few weeks ago. And a ride-along with Spencer at the police department, which was awesome too. Thank you, Chief Renian, for arranging that. And finally, two ride-alongs with fire, Station 1 and 4. So, it's been such a pleasure and honor to get to know our staff. And if they didn't already know it, I am on your side. I'm an ally and we have really great staff working for Yuba City. And then, kind of on another note, I want to welcome back to Earth American astronauts Sunny and Butch. That's all.
All righty. Councilmember Pasquale?
Thank you, Mayor. Attended my first GSEC meeting down in Sacramento last week. It was very enlightening. In a sidebar with the executive director, he was, our opportunities here are very limited. And the opportunity that they see for us in our community is the ag manufacturing. But we've got zero availability of properties. We have no properties at these types of businesses. And that was of grave concern to me. So, that's something we possibly want to start using whatever resources we can get together to bring that to the forefront so that we can start getting some inventory of properties that would. They were talking about that with the economic development. Those manufacturing jobs are sixfold for anything, those CTE programs that we can bring to our community. So, that was an eye-opener. I was installed as a board member at this point now. The, Mark, do you want to tag-team the HCD ad hoc or would you like to take it? Or, okay. Okay. The thing I took away from our ad hoc with HCD, I was straight up with them and I asked them, were they the decision-makers that I was speaking with? And they assured me that they were. And what I came away with, their availability, what they could decide was possibly extending time to the Merrimitt Village through Habitat's ability to continue on with this. We were very thorough, Mark and I were very thorough about asking questions of what, how we could juggle or possibly make this come about in our community. And it comes down to one clear thing. They need to have their funding in place. We can't do this shell game of, yeah, maybe kind of, sort of. We can borrow Peter and pay Paul, all these things. And the one thing that we came away with from them, and this is from the state, is they can, only thing they can do is give them time, possibly. That might even have to go all the way to the governor. We're not sure. With that, I conclude my report.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'll start there. A couple of quick bullets. Number one, there was four HDC folks in there and one of them was the assistant to the director. So, Michael Pasquale hit it on the head. I do believe we had decision-makers in the room. So, no additional funds available. So, there isn't any more ability for us or the county or Habitat, for that matter, to go out and ask for more home key funds. Those won't be coming. The dollar amount that they provided for the grant was based on a per-unit basis. So, you can't skinny it down and say, okay, well, we have 71 units. Can we just build 60? That's not permissible either. So, you can see, we were trying to do a lot of different. trying to do a lot of different things in this meeting. Uh, we did ask if the funding that had been returned by the city of Long Beach would be available, and that was a hard no. Um, so that's, that's not available. So as, as Councilman Pescualli mentioned, really the thing that, that we can do is this, uh, as far as one of the, the awardees is, is ask for an extension. I know there's been some other conversations going on today with Habitat. Um, I know that we've also met with the county. Um, you know, there, there, is there a role for the county to play? Uh, possibly. Um, but that's to be determined. We did commit to, uh, to, uh, HD, uh, HDC, HCD, sorry, um, that, um, we are, we want to see the project go. And, uh, I mean, we're not trying to kill the project. Uh, however, we cannot burden, uh, the citizens of Yuba City with, uh, a debt, especially given the current financial situation we are. So really where I think we're at, and this is my, my assessment coming out of the meeting, is, you know, working with Habitat to determine if, uh, we want to, and I hope we do, ask for an extension, and then continue to work with them to seek out, um, gap funding, whether, you know, through many means. And I know, again, they've, they've been speaking with some financial institutions. That isn't, that is permissible, um, if, if we so choose. So that's pretty much, I, I don't, you know, typically we don't have questions and answers during this time during, but if any of you have a question of Michael or I regarding, I mean, it's a big, this is a big project, right? We don't want to see $24 million go someplace else if we can, if we can help with it. Questions? Okay.
Let me ask you one, Mark, because we've, we've, we've all been embedded with this project for the last two weeks really heavy. Uh, is there anything that you feel that we've left on the table at this point, or anything further we can do at this point other than trying to, to get them more time to go get all of their ducks in a row?
Yeah, I think, I think we need to be an active partner with them and not just rely on them to try to figure it out. So I think it, to the extent that we have the ability or they have questions, or they have answers, et cetera, and I think we have been all along through this process is to be responsive, and I would ask the same of them.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Uh, just to, just to follow up on, on, uh, Michael, what you said, the, the, the issue is the possibility of it being, being extended, have an extension. Is there, has there been a precedent, precedent set for that?
The, the assistant director was saying that they've exhausted their 21 months, and it's very, uh, it's very unusual to go past that. That's why I asked for you, the decision-makers, and they kind of deferred it, that it might have to go to, to the director of HCD, and it might even have to go to the governor's desk.
I, I would agree with that. I think that, that the flavor I got back from it is they do not want to take the money back, but they absolutely know the predicament, if you will, or the challenge that the city of Yuba City feels.
Very good point, Mark. Absolutely. She hit it right on the head. She, she saw that our concern, and she, and she agreed with our concerns, uh, that, uh, we're, we're not going to stick our neck out.
So on a, um, a little different note, um, at the Regional Housing Authority, we did get a little bit of good news on Richland Village. Michael was there. Um, the, that particular project, which is 170 units down, uh, off of Garden Highway, that looks like it's making its way through HCD. And, um, so it, it has not been awarded yet, but signs are, it is, it's made it to the next level, which is a very good sign for that project. And, uh, again, that's more affordable housing. Um, so we'll keep our eye on that one, uh, as it goes forward. And you may recall, we have some money skin in that game as well, uh, through different funding mechanisms we've committed to them, to RHA. Uh, I attended the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, uh, just a, a moment of, you know, when it starts raining hard and, and, you know, you started hearing about, um, river, uh, and reservoir levels, just remember, you know, that, that this group has gone out and done one heck of a great job of, of providing safety to our community through the levee system. And, uh, you know, they have a few projects in the well. We didn't talk about Wade's project at this meeting, but, uh, you know, they, uh, which is the confluence of the Yuba and the, and the Feather, but, uh, they're doing good stuff. Uh, attended LAFCO Local Agency Formation Commission, um, moving forward with the fire, uh, services, this, all county fire departments, multiple municipal services review. Uh, I think we said that we're going to see a, um, a, a draft report, or at least a report in the next few months, so that will be good. That's long awaited. Uh, new member on that, um, LAFCO board is Jeff Stevens. And we talked a lot about Habitat, so there were several meetings with that. That's all I have for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, been a busy couple of weeks. Um, I will start with where you, where we kind of left off with Habitat. Uh, it has absolutely, I know, consumed a lot of my time the last couple of weeks. Um, I want to say thank you to Assembly Member James Gallagher and his office, because they helped facilitate that meeting that you guys were able to get to, and, uh, they've been a great resource in this. So, uh, in saying that, know that the city is not leaving anything on the table. We want to see this project go. We are trying to do everything we can. Um, and, uh, just my, my personal take, if we get this thing across the line, it's going to be because of all the efforts that all of the municipalities are really putting together at this point to, to try to overcome the gap funding. So, uh, stay tuned. There's going to be a lot more to come. Met with the DBA at their monthly meeting, uh, the best I could. The, uh, I think you were there, sir. Um, basically, they're moving forward with a lot of things. They have their, uh, typical concerns with what's going on downtown. I know that we are looking at, uh, some potential, uh, ordinances and stuff for, for, uh, the downtown district for what's allowed down there, so that will be coming forward for, uh, shortly. Um, did a interview with, another interview with KOVR 13. Uh, what we've been doing is hit the radar. They came up to talk about Habitat, and, uh, thank you for covering that. They did a great job. We've been trying to get our message out with our city videos. Uh, those will continue. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for joining me on the last one. Yep, you covered this as well. Thank you. Um, the, um, we're, one thing that we embarked on, and we've got the outreach ad hoc, is we're trying to make sure people get the right information and everything out there this year. So, uh, stay tuned to the videos. We're trying to keep them short, sweet, and to the point, and there's more to come, because we want everybody to know, uh, what's going on and be very transparent with things. Uh, and then I also attended Sabufka, which, uh, the vice mayor just covered. Uh, I did think they brought Wade's project up. Didn't it involve a canoe and a shovel? Kayak, that's what it was. They said you would just take care of that for us. So, uh, busy weeks ahead for all of us coming up, and I'm sure that Merrimitt Village is going to be right there at the top with everything that we do. So, uh, want to say thank you to the council. Thank you, Ms. Langley and our entire staff, because, uh, the nimbleness that we have operated, Mr. Moody, you and your team, the nimbleness that we have operated the last couple of weeks in addressing this is usually not found in a municipality, but it has been all hands on deck, and, uh, we are trying to find a solution, and that includes you too, Mr. Chaffin, because I know you've, you've been right there with us. So, thank you to everyone. Uh, with that, we would normally be getting out of here, but we're not tonight, because we now are going to go into closed session. And, Mr. Chaffin, will you read our closed session, uh, item for tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session. It's item A, Conference Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Deciding Whether to Initiate Litigation Present to Paragraph 4 of Subdivision D of Government Code, Section 54956.91 case. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on our closed session agenda item for this evening? Our seniors really want to talk. They're already up. All right, hearing no comments, we will move to closed session at this time.